Hello, good evening. Welcome to the first meeting of the 32nd Council. I'm going to fall out of my chair. The first role -- order of business is a roll call. We already have our Council Luck who were sworn in a moment or under two ago. If you didn't catch that, you can see it on YouTube by our Attorney General. So, Mr. Tong. So, for our roll, we have Patrice Granatowski, Portia Bordelon, Andre Bumgardner, Rachel Franco, Conrad Heed, Leanne O'Bree, Juliet Parker, Ridish -- oops, Juan Melendez, and Joseph Herry. Okay. So, that's a full complement. If you would rise, please. We're going to salute the flag and have a moment of silence. And if I could have Councilor Zupieri lead us in the salute.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated since you -- I need a motion from the floor to adopt the 32nd Town Council temporary rules. They're actually the 31st rules that you're adopting for the 32nd, but that's okay. And so, we've got Granatowski. And who signed to that, please? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of adopting temporary rules for the 32nd Town Council? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. All right. Election of Mayor. I'll take nominations from the floor. Joe, Councilor Zupieri.
I take great pleasure in nominating Patrice Granatowski to continue as the mayor for the council. She has done an outstanding job in the past two years, and I can't think anyone of anyone among us that could do better.
And I heard a second from Councilor Parker. You have any words or your own second? Okay. Are there any other nominations for the floor?
I'll make a nomination. I'd like to nominate Andre Bumgardner. I think he's young and up and coming. He's done amazing things, not only at the state but on the local level. He was recently appointed a year and a half go-to-town council. I think he makes a strong contender to be considered for the town mayor.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
So, we have two mo -- any other motions? Any other nominations? May I have a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
A second, please?
Second.
They are closed. Okay. So, we -- all -- okay. If you will raise your hand, and I will count you for the first -- the last -- I should take the last first. The last nomination was Councilor Bumgardner. So, those in favor, would you please raise your hand? And those opposed?
Opposing? Instead of just point of order, we're opposing rather than just voting for a particular council or another council?
Well, I suppose you could. Okay. All those in favor of Councilor Granatowski? Raise your hand. All right. And we can see by the hands that we have a new mayor. And I shall present you with a gavel. If you would raise -- raise. And raise your right hand. Do solemnly and sincerely swear to affirm or affirm that you will faithfully discharge according to Groton Town Charter and the rules of the Groton Town Charter -- Council, the duties of mayor and chairman of the Town Council of the whole?
I will.
Okay. Excellent. I'll leave us here. Use it sparingly.
I will. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. I'll take my chair and go.
Thank you. Sorry, just give me one second, please, to get organized. She has my pen. Madam Clerk, may I have my pen? You have the nice pen.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Roman numeral six, appointment of the Rules Committee. And this is on page four. Are there any volunteers to serve on the Rules Committee? Councilor Bumgardner, Councilor O'Bree, and the third, Councilor Parker. Okay. And then, the three of you can decide when you would like to meet and who will chair the Rules Committee. Is that acceptable? Very good. Thank you very much for being willing to do that. Under recognition, awards, and memorials, I just wanted to make a brief statement, if you don't mind, please. I just want to say thank you to the people of Groton for entrusting all of us with this awesome responsibility. We are honored to serve as your council for the next two years. For the past several months, we have had conversations with so many residents in every corner of town. We heard your hopes and we heard your concerns, and we look forward to working to grow Groton together. We count on continued communications with our state delegation, Senator Summers and Representatives Conley and Dela Cruz, our counterparts in the city in Groton Long Point, and our team at the Board of Education and the RTM. We look forward to continuing our efforts at smart growth, protecting our natural resources, moving Groton toward a resilient and sustainable future, and of course, securing a fine education for all of Groton's children. Thank you again, and to paraphrase Barack Obama, "We are honored and grateful that we have a chance to finish what we started. Our work begins tonight. Let's go." All right. We are on to recognitions, awards, and memorials. And we're going to start off with a very special recognition this evening for a very special woman who is with us this evening, and I'm going to turn it over to Councilor O'Bree.
Okay.
Would you like to read from here? Would you like to?
Rita, would you like to come up?
Would you like to go to the podium, Councilor O'Bree?
Sure. The Groton Town Council gratefully acknowledges the many years of dedications -- dedicated service by Rita Schmidt to the town of Groton, Connecticut. I'm going to read you just a few of her accomplishments. Not all of them, but a few of them. January 1, 1989, to 7/1/2015, Connecticut Mystic and Moore Committee. 4/4, 1989, to 10/1, 1990, Tourism Development Commission. 2/14/94, to 1/1, 2012, Heritage Park Advisory Committee Board. 7/1, 2000, to 6/1, 2006, Economic Development Committee. 1/1, 2001, to 1/7, 2013, Justice of the Peace. 1/5, 2001, to 1/23, 2007, RTM member. 1/16 to 2007, to 1/3, 2009, Groton Town Council. 12/1, 2013, 12/1, 2015, Groton Town Manager. Mayor, you want that job?
No, I don't. We have a wonderful manager.
1/1, 2012, to 7/1, 2014, Member, Ledge Light Board of Directors. 3/20, 212, to 1/1, 2014, Energy Efficiency and Conservation Committee. 2/1, 2014, to 7/1, 2014, Mystic Cooperative Task Force. 2005, 2/17, to 12/3, 2019, Groton Town Council. 2005 of 17, to 12/3 of 19, Personnel Committee. Thank you very much, Rita Schmidt.
Well, Leanne, thank you.
Better than when we were arguing.
And you certainly do. And thank you so much. You've been a great little model, and I hope we can live up to half of what you've done for the town.
Well, I think you far exceeded anything I've done, and I want to congratulate the new council. I think that you have nine wonderful members that are going to work very hard to make Groton the most efficient town and the most wonderful town to live in, and good luck to you.
Thank you. And Councilor Zupieri wanted to read a proclamation into the record.
This is a proclamation recognizing Rita M. Schmidt. Whereas Rita Schmidt has been an active member of the Town Council and Mystic Community -- pardon me -- the town of Groton and the Mystic community for more years than most people can remember. And whereas she retired as president from the popular Out of Mystic Schooner Cruises Incorporated, which operated out of Mystic Anne, whereas while living on Bank Street and Mystic, Rita became a very active in the promotion of Mystic, the jewel of Connecticut. And whereas she served as a tireless volunteer on many town, regional, and state boards, including the Economic Development Commission, Tourism Development Commission, Heritage Park Advisory Board, Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments, Mystic Cooperative Task Force, Connecticut's Mystic and Moore, Ledge Light Board of Directors. And whereas Rita served six years on the Groton Town Council, including one term as the mayor of the town of Groton. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of Groton -- of the town of Groton does hereby thank Rita M. Schmidt for the many contributions she bestowed toward the betterment of our community and does hereby send congratulations on job well done. Dated at Groton, Connecticut, this third day of December 2019, and signed by Patrice Granatowski, Mayor of the town of Groton.
Oh, Joe, thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you. I'll miss every moment, every Tuesday night, and I will be looking in and checking to see what's happening in our wonderful town. I know that the problems that we have can seem very difficult to tackle at many times, but I know this is a group that will do this and do it very, very well. I want to say congratulations to each one of you. I'm very proud of you, and I was very honored to serve with you. Thank you.
We love you. All the knowledge you have, thank you so much for guiding us, and tell us when we're doing something wrong.
Okay.
And this is all for everyone part.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much. I'm very touched. I don't know if I can even say anything. It's just overcoming, but thank you all. Thank you all from the bottom of my heart. Thank you. Thank you, Juliet. Rachel. Good luck to you.
Thank you. Can we do a picture?
Oh, we can. Thank you. Thank you so much, Rita. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita.
Oh, thank you. I'm going to miss my seat next year. I know. I love that seat.
You want to go in front of the podium?
Okay.
Do you want to hold your award? Your plaque?
Thanks.
I'm just going to --
My shirt.
Thank you so much for coming out and for all you've done. We will need you to -- Like Juliet said, I smell. That's me. I think that's it. Do you want some help, Rita? Okay. This is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens to address the council. Please sign the sheet on the table at the front of the meeting room. I have it here if there's anybody else who'd like to speak. When you are recognized, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councilors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during the responses to citizens' petition portion of the meeting. And I have one person signed up to speak. That's Mr. John Davis.
So, can I pass out? I've got written comments.
We need name and address, please, sir.
John Davis, 198 Shore Avenue, Groton.
Thank you.
Can I pass these out?
You can pass them here, and then we can just distribute them. That way, you don't have to walk around the room.
One short.
Okay.
I live on Shore Avenue by Eastern Point Beach and have become the kind of the topic of the issue is about short-term rentals. They have started to proliferate in Eastern Point Beach, and I decided to start working on it, kind of speak up and see if there's anything we could do about it because my concern is I'm going to probably look up in about five years and find that myself and perhaps other parts of Groton are living in commercial lodging districts, which makes no sense to me because I think everything is rather exquisitely defined already in our zoning regs. I've studied them and know pretty well, the city zoning regs where I live, and I would expect the town has equally precise and clear zoning regulations as well as the other parts of town. Just to recap, about a month ago, I emailed the council, and there may be some different faces, but I emailed on the 12th of November our letter that we sent to the city council. And it was, you know, it had some of the horror stories and all that that we don't need to repeat tonight, but just, you know, the stuff people are concerned about, parking, noise, too many people, strange neighbors, you know, all those kinds of things. So, I sent it to you, and I'm basically here asking for your help on addressing it, trying to come up with some reasonable, I guess you'd say, solutions, compromises, or, you know, regulations of some sort that would just address it and be fair to everybody. In general, our sense is that society, this isn't about Groton, but society has kind of leaned over backwards for the rights of an individual homeowner, that it's rather sacred to be able to do whatever you want with your home, including renting it out three different times a day and all that. That was facetious. But what it completely ignores is the rights of the neighbors, the rights of the group, the rights of the neighborhood. And that's what we're trying to rebalance, is how I'd put it. What I have found in my travels the past few months working on it is that not only the No-Inc Fire District is working on it for the past year or so, and I think you've been reading in the paper and other ways know about the issue, I was pleased to find out Groton Long Point Association actually has a subcommittee on short-term rentals. And I think right now they're at the stage of trying to decide if it is or is not an issue for that community before they decide if there's anything to be done. And then, I know one or several residents have recently addressed this Town Council, and again, we, a bunch of us, including 25 signatures, and that was not any campaign. That was like going out on and off for about a week, and we got 25 signatures. So, I found that to be really pleasantly surprising, the degree of support or concern people have about this issue in the neighborhood that they live. One of the main contentions or concerns is that we have these very precise zoning regulations in the city, I'm sure, in the town, et cetera. And yet, for some reason, I think some parties choose to look the other way when it comes to short-term rentals. So, you know, home-based businesses are very exquisitely addressed, about what you can and can't do, and all the ground rules and other things, but for some reason, short-term rentals haven't been, and we really think that needs to be pulled in and addressed.
You have one minute?
Many towns and cities around the United States, as well as Connecticut, have been dealing with this, and I can provide a lot of substantiation. Connecticut Office of Legislative Research did a paper that cited about ways this issue can be managed, durational cap on rentals, number of days you can rent, density controls, parking requirements, onsite owner occupation, et cetera. So, there's ways to address it that might work for the town. And the Southeast Council of Governments recently put out a pretty interesting article, white paper, about short-term rentals and their recommendation or conclusion about using ordinances. Not as a recommendation or anything, but of course, in our travels, we also found out that there's businesses now emerging to help all the municipalities like ourselves write regulations, get them passed, and then monitor them for compliance. So, I just point that out. So, thank you. My request is, could you please try to help step up to this issue for all of Groton? And I think what the Town Council could do would be, it would certainly help provide a lot of leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. No one else has signed up. Is there anyone else here that would wish to address the council at this time? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Responses to citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. And while Mr. Davis is here, I just wanted to relay that the January 28th Committee of the Whole Short-Term Rentals will be on the agenda. We had enough councilors interested in bringing it up as an agenda item. Councilor Zupieri.
The one thing on the little list that you brought us, it appears that you've done a lot of work on this, but you cite Section 3.2B and 3.2D of the City of Zoning Regulations. Supposedly, there already is prohibition for these kind of short-term rentals unless they are bed and breakfasts, which have been issued a permit and which are occupied by the owner. Is that the case in the short-term rentals that are in your neighborhood?
Mr. Burt wanted to jump in and answer that question.
I was just going to say, Mayor Hendrick just texted me to say he's watching live, to say that the city's looking into this, and it's been referred to a committee to research it.
Okay.
I still would like to know if you know, Mr. Davis, if you know whether or not the short-term rentals in your neighborhood are occupied by their owners.
No, I'm aware of.
Okay. Councilor Zupieri, I've had requests that this does not meet the criteria of clarification of questions or clarification of citizens' comments, so we're going to have to move on to other councilors at this point.
Aren't I entitled to five minutes?
You are entitled to clarifying questions.
I'm sorry?
Clarifying questions are what we are asking.
Well, that is a clarifying question. He gave us information about the town regulations, and I want to know if the people that he finds in his neighborhood running these outfits are meeting the zoning regulation.
Karen, is that?
Yes.
Yes.
This is my opinion. Most of these short-term rentals are not owner-occupied. I, in fact, don't think they're legal because the zoning regs for the city, as I read them, they're very explicit about what can be done in certain residential zones. There's four or five of them. And short-term rentals aren't mentioned anywhere. Hotels are mentioned, motels are mentioned, bed and breakfasts and so on, but not short-term rentals. My reading or understanding of zoning rules, that means they're not allowed, just like I can't put a gas station in a residential zone because it's not addressed as being permissible or, you know, applicable, if you will. So, no, I would say most are not.
Have you made a complaint to the building inspector in the city?
No, that's a good suggestion. No, but as Mayor Hendrick said just now, there is a city council working group two meeting next Monday, let's say at 6:00 PM or whenever, where it's going to be worked on, and I think the building inspector is going to be there among other people.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Councilor Bumgardner and then O'Bree.
In your research, were you able to kind of parse through the nuances of, you know, a commercial short-term rental as opposed to an individual who may be using, for example, the Airbnb app to rent out their home for a short term? It may not be for, you know, for, you know.
I would ask at this point that we hold these, we invite Mr. Davis back on the 28th, and we could ask those in-depth questions at that point, if that's not objectionable to the rest of the council.
We can talk offline, Mr. Davis. Thank you.
Councilor O'Bree, clarifying question?
Suggestion? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just going to suggest that we do with the Council of our manager, form a committee ourselves to perhaps work in conjunction with the city, and if there are others that want to be part of that, so that we could come together on a unified approach to it.
Thank you. Councilor Bordelon.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Davis for coming out, and I have been following your concerns and feedback as far as this being a broader issue. Another gentleman did come out and speak under public comment, and I think it is, you know. know, you know, some, some people will say a safety concern, and others will say it also hurts our economy, you know, our local hotel business and things like that. So it's definitely an important issue, and I hear your concerns, and I, you know, would love to speak more with you at some point, and thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other councillors wish to respond? Okay, seeing none, we are on to item Rome Number 11, Consent Calendar. Councillor Baumgartner, would you move the consent calendar?
Certainly.
We're on page five where the minutes begin, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I'll make a motion to move the consent calendar, which includes items 2019-759, November 6, 2019 minutes, 2019-760, November 19, 2019 minutes, 2019-761, Special Trust Fund contributions in November, and 2019-724-1, miscellaneous and ad hoc committee appointments. So moved.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Heed. So the minutes begin on page five, and they just follow in order. Is there any discussion on any of the items in the consent calendar? Councillors of Perry.
On page seven, or page two of the minutes, of Wednesday, November 6, 2019, we had Neil Parfit of 26 Fort Hill Road complaining about noise coming from a generator. Has anything been done about that noise?
So we're, right now, we are just moving the accuracy of the minutes, and we can have updates on that. And I'm sure Mr. Burt does have an update because there has been things going on. So that will be included in the updates. Right now, we're just verifying the minutes.
Okay, all right. Did have a problem with page three of the November 6 minutes. It's to the, the next to the last paragraph that said, "Councillor Franco stated that she received a complaint packet from Tom Bradham of Seven Gravel Street Association regarding short-term rentals. She noted that this is becoming an issue and should be looked at. In response to Councillor Franco, Town Manager Burt stated that there could be a fine if the trailer is not removed within a certain timeframe." I think we're mixing things up there.
I think you're right.
So I think that should be straightened out. That comment by, the town manager should go back to the Taco Palace that's on Fort Hill.
Thank you, Councillors of Perry. Councillor Parker, have?
Never.
Okay. On page seven of the packet, the last paragraph, there's a spelling error for Mr. Parfit's name, missing an R in Parfit. Anyone else with anything on the minutes or any other item in the consent? Seeing none. All those in favor of moving the consent calendar as read by Councillor Baumgartner, please say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously? Thank you. We are on to communications and reports, town councillors. Councillor Baumgartner.
So before I get into my report for the last couple of weeks, I wanted to take the opportunity to deeply thank our beloved outgoing councillor, Rita Schmidt. My introduction to Rita was probably about now more than five years ago, when I had just gotten elected as state rep. At the time, I was 20. Sometimes I think I knew what I was doing, but, you know, as I get older, I realize I really didn't. And the first call I made was to, at the time, Mayor Rita Schmidt. And what I thought was going to be a very quick two to three minute phone chat, it quickly became an hour-long phone call, where she was updating me on the great work the town was doing, and, you know, identifying areas of collaboration and also getting to know her. And, you know, you always had an open door, always was willing to listen, and I felt like you placed tremendous faith and trust in me. And I always valued that, and, you know, I had just the utmost honor in serving with you on the council, you know, the last couple of years. And so I'm gonna miss you dearly. Expect calls from me still. But you're a great friend, so thank you for everything, and, you know, don't be a stranger. Thank you to the public for entrusting me with your votes on this past November. It's been a whirlwind the last couple of weeks preparing for this new council, and so excited to, you know, work with familiar faces, and now Councillor Melendez. We got great work ahead of us, like Mayor Granatowski discussed, about, you know, ensuring that Groton becomes more resilient in the next couple of years, and I'm committed to that. That's my number-one priority. I think that's the principal priority for many others here on the council. So again, thank you, and looking forward to representing you on the council in the next few years.
Thank you. Councillor Parker.
Thank you to everyone, to the voters, to the support I received. It's been a rough month and a half, two months, actually. I thank everyone that was here to support me and my family during, during a difficult time, and I'm looking forward to working with everyone, and thank you.
Councillor Franco.
I would also like to thank Rita, and I will miss you, and I value your wise advice and your opinions. And I look forward to the next two years working for Groton. I would like to note that we had a beautification meeting this past week, but most importantly, some members of the beautification committee went up to the Groton capital, submarine capital of the world sign, and planted 189 daffodil bulbs in front of the sign, which is pretty exciting, because I've never been up there before. So I'm hoping that they'll bloom in the spring and will look beautiful, and we'll hopefully add more to those. Thank you.
Very good, wonderful. Councillor Heed.
I have no report, but I'll echo all of the words that have been presented regarding Rita and to the voters. Thank you.
Councillor Oberg.
Thank you, Rita. This last week, let me stop and think. Attended the beautification meeting coming along. We've got a lot of little things we're working on, and our chair is doing a great job. Also attended a tour of Colonel Ledger's school, as you know. Requests have gone out for developers for that. Just an absolute shame how that building looks now. I was kind of like going down memory lane. My kids all went there. So, but that was it for me this week, with a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Councillor Bordelain.
I also want to say the same, thanking Rita Schmidt for her generosity to not only the council, but to the community. To give that much time of yourself in any capacity speaks volumes about the person who's doing them. And so, in a time where, you know, things are, you know, very tough, it's nice to know that, you know, you're still here with us, and we can count on you, and thank you for your service and everything. I also want to thank the voters. Like a lot of the councillors, we all had our own trials and tribulations, and, you know, as many know, I've been open. I battled breast cancer through all this, finishing my treatment September 10th, but continue to, when asked, or put my name into, to run for council. So for me, this means a lot. I know I was currently on the council for the last three to four weeks as an appointed position, but this time I'm here as an elected position. And I just encourage anybody out there who thinks that you can't do something, go for it. Because when I didn't think I was gonna be strong enough to knock the doors, meet the voters, keep up with everybody else up here, and run a fair campaign, and be satisfied with it, I was able to. And for that, I'm thankful, and I'm thankful to be here, and I'm excited to support the voters, and I heard all your concerns, and it's an honor. I also want to welcome Juan Melendez on, coming from the RTM. I think you're gonna be a great asset up here, and I'm excited to see where things go. Also, this is not accurate, this is my opinion or my thoughts, but I did some research and looking through other councils that have served, we're on the, what, 32nd, or what is this, the, there's never been four minority people that have been non-appointed but elected to position in the town of Groton that I can find so far. I may stand corrected. And for that, I am grateful. I'm grateful to be a part of that, to see as many diverse backgrounds, when I just, not only race, because everybody identifies differently up here, but also to see as many females up here. But this is a true representation of Groton, and that makes me excited. I think it gives people a voice to look at and look up to. As a young person growing up in this town, I never had many role models that looked like me, and you know what? Now I'm excited to be up here. And I can say that now as a seat that I have worked for, and I just would like that for the record, to my knowledge. And I attended the swearing-in at New London with Councillor Parker and Councillor Heed, and they too had an unbelievable, the first Puerto Rican, Spanish guy, I can't think of his name right now, I apologize.
Dominguez.
Yeah, Dominguez. And so a lot of history's happening, and things are changing, and that means a lot. And that's, it's not party-driven or politically-driven, it's, it's just demographics, and that is important. But thank you, everybody.
Councillor Melendez.
Unfortunately, before today, I had not had the pleasure of knowing our former mayor, Rita Schmidt. But I have met her today, and I would just like to say, I know I have a lot of huge shoes to fill, and I will do my best. And I now have your contact information. I will be asking you many questions, and I hope you, you will just not be annoyed by, by the amount of questions I have to ask you. Thank you.
And Councillors of Perry.
I have sat beside Rita for two years here. I've admired her enormously as a quiet lady, an elegant lady, and when she spoke quietly, it was filled with common sense, her speech was. It was also a lady filled with hope. She always looks on the bright side for all of us. So I thank you for leading. I hope some of that rubbed off on me as you were sitting next to me, and I am grateful for the two years that I got to sit next to you.
And I, of course, echo the sentiments regarding the former mayor. I just wanted to give you an update. February 4th will be the joint town council-city meeting, and we are hosting this quarter. So it's February 4th. It will be the joint meeting with the city council, and then we will have our regular business once we recess and the city adjourns their meeting. I also wanted just to mention to the public that the holiday kickoff is on December 7th at 5:00 o'clock at the senior center, and I hope everybody can come out. It was a really nice affair last year. Town manager, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Clerk of the representative town meeting. My apologies.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. The representative, outgoing representative town meeting, I had a wonderful meeting that I didn't attend, but I watched. And the new, the new members of the RTM elect, as of today, this is their term, but they are not sworn in yet. They will be sworn in next week on the 11th at 7:30 at the Groton Senior Center. They did have a orientation meeting last evening here at the Annex, and most every, all but two members, new members, attended, so that's an excellent turnout, as well as many current members, from the old council, I mean, excuse me, RTM. So that's the 31 out and 32 in.
There you go.
Forty-one members.
Clerk of the council.
I have nothing to report, but I'm, accept congratulations on your election and your election as mayor, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Now, town manager.
Good evening. First, in response to Councillors of Perry's question on the food truck, I've sent at least one lengthy update, I think, to the council, but the owner of the property and as well as the operator of the food truck have been served, noticed that they're not, they're in violation of the, of their site plan on several issues. They have 14 days to submit a new site plan. At that point, if not, if one is not submitted and approved, then you go to the violation stage, you give them the notice of violation. Understanding from the health department is that at that stage, the food license could be pulled at that point. So that's about 12 or 10 to 12 days away. And if you'll notice, yesterday, the trailer was removed, that large trailer, so that is off-site now, so progress. So it's getting there. And then, other than that, going this week to a Lawrence Memorial Hospital update luncheon on Thursday, visiting with, we're touring around the delegation from Kingston, Jamaica, and then, that's about it. Oh, something went out to the council, you asked last time about adding, or somebody, I think it was at the last council meeting, about adding town emails for the RTM members. I'd sent information out on costs, a little under $2,000 a year to do that, about $1,900 a year. I was gonna put it on an upcoming agenda, that's the council's wishes, I just wanted a direction, if you want to move forward with it.
Is there any objection to putting that item on a future agenda? It would be purchasing licenses so that RTM members could have town emails. Okay, so that's fine. Thank you. Councillors of Perry, did that answer your questions regarding the short-term rentals, or do you have further questions for Mr. Burt?
Tells me we're moving in the right direction.
I meant the food truck.
I'm sorry?
I meant the food truck, sorry, I said the wrong thing.
Yeah. Tells me we're moving in the right direction.
Okay, great. Councillor Bordelain.
Thanks. Was there any update on the air quality report from the Board of Ed for Northeast Academy?
No, I've requested it from the, I've not received it.
Okay. And, and just another thing about the emails, so that would ensure, so each year, you're saying $18,000 to $2,000 for the?
$2,000 total. You pay per license, you know, for the year, for their, so there'd be 40-something of them, and, you know, it comes out to a little under $2,000. Simple enough to do, though, it's just a matter of getting some more licenses.
Then we are on to department heads, Superintendent Schools and Board of Education. I just wanted to report that Dr. Grunier, actually Chairperson Watson, will be sending out the, the updated policy on the off-budget grant acceptance. So that's gonna, that was finalized, and she's gonna be mailing that.
And just to mention, Dr. Grunier is gonna attend the next meeting to be here for the Board of Ed Administrator's contract, as well as the policy, and there's actually one other item. In turn, if you remember the high school asbestos project, you have to name a building committee just to request to the state for that reimbursement, whatever it is, I forget, it's 40-ish percent. In the past, what we've always, councils have always done is had this permanent school building committee do that, and it's basically a one-time thing of just making a request to the state.
Thank you. Councillor Oberg.
Do you think it would be possible to ask the superintendent of schools to give us the same presentation as was given to the RTM on statistics, on the level of success in our education?
We can. We're getting a full, we do have a full agenda that night, but...
Okay. And the other thing that I'd like to say, that I'm really kind of disappointed by the lack of attendance by department heads, and I think we need, you're excellent at updating us on everything, but I think it would be good for us to be in a position to ask more questions of them that might be on our mind, and having a better feel of things as we go forward with the budget.
You know, well, it's always been that we have them come when they have items on the agenda, they always attend for those. But I don't want to do, because people are working well over their hours, I don't want to have them come just to come, though, you know, they're here for the budget meetings, they're here for any of their items. But it's never, it was never the intent to have them just come and hang out for a meeting.
I see them going to the RTM.
Not very often, only if they have items.
Well, whatever, whatever the consensus is, but I don't like the fact that we don't have the communication with them. I mean, I have questions of the police department, I've had not had an opportunity to ask them. If you, you know, I just think better communication would be very helpful to the council. If I'm by myself, that's fine, I'll let it be, but if other people feel the same, maybe we can do that.
And what we could do maybe is, like I said, we've had, you know, Greg, like Greg's been here recently, so there's no need to have him here again. But if someone hasn't been here in a while for an item, maybe that's the person to have come in to get a little update.
Okay. Or if there are questions between... Or if there are questions between meetings, if you get them to the manager, and then if he can get responses, or if not, then you can invite them here if you're not, if the question's not answered via mail, perhaps? I'm not sure. I'm just trying to think of a solution short of having people...
When we first started, they were coming in much more than they do now.
Okay.
And I don't think it's, I don't think it's right that we just never see anybody until they want us to sign off for a grant. That's the only time we see them. And that's, to me, that's not appropriate.
I have to disagree some, in terms of we had John Ryan here giving an advance update on all our projects.
I have to, I take exception to the EDC. They're great. They come in, they tell us what's going on. But the other departments do not. They never give us any kind of a briefing. An example, I don't ever know if the wall ever got changed in the Police Department, you know?
And I do...
And we're coming into another, John, we're coming into another budget time, we don't even know what's been done.
I have put that in my weekly reports, however, we did not get bids on, no one bid on it, so it's going to be bid out with a larger project. So I do try to cover those things in my weekly report.
But you know, that's two years since we appropriated that money.
Yeah, no one's bidding on it. We've tried twice. That's part of the problem, it's too small a project. And so, we've got to try another way.
Would you like to have the chief come in to answer some questions, or was that just an example you were using?
No, I think it would be very nice for him to come in and talk with us.
Mr. Bird, would that be possible?
As I say, other than when they come in to ask for a grant to be approved, we don't see them. And I understand, John, that that's your job to be between us so that we don't take their time, but we don't want to abuse your time. And if we just occasionally could have a conversation, I think it would help greatly.
Mr. Bird, is that possible, to have the chief come in to do just an update? Thank you. Counselor Bordelone.
Thank you. I, it seems to me, and I can also agree with Counselor Obray to an extent, I was going to bring up that the Board of Ed budget is an important budget in this town, and it's over 60-something percent, I don't know the exact number, 68, 65 percent of the total town expenditure, which is an important part of the town. And it seems to me that it would make sense that once a month would, once a month would be very minimal to come in and give some type of report, and if could not be in attendance, maybe a written report that is maybe handed out or attached, you know, to our agenda in the absence. I also attended that RTM meeting where there was a report coming from the RTM to the Town Council. I do feel that there is much more transparency and communication with the Board of Ed on that level than there is at the Town Council. So that is a gap that I can agree with Lee, Counselor Obray, on. And I do agree that, once again, it's important to be proactive versus reactive, and so it would be helpful to have a more transparent versus the email trace that you had nicely suggested as an option, but it becomes like, not everyone sees that email, we can't respond, it's a meeting. And that's, it would be nice to have some communications when items are brought before to the town manager or to the town mayor. Transparency and communication is key. I understand the hours, but I'm sure something could be worked out where they flex out early another day, once a month, not every month, but it would be helpful. Thank you.
We are on to Roman numeral 13, committee reports. There's nothing from Committee of the Whole, temporary rules, I don't think we have anything for that. Personnel and appointments, did you want to address anything, Counselor Heed?
Personnel and appointments, we met on November 19th. This was passed as part of the consent calendar. So it was Counselors Zepary, Counselor Schmidt, and myself met for the last time, and we appointed Leanne Obray to the vacancy on SCARA. Thank you.
You appointed Rita what?
We did. You should have attended. We also appointed Stacy Leach, Acting Assistant Public Works Director, to represent the town on SCARA.
Thank you. And thank you, Counselor Obray, for agreeing to serve on SCARA for us. And Rules Committee, I don't think there's anything at this point. So we are on to Roman numeral 14, new business. And this is 2019-699-2, appointing Town of Groton Tree Warden on page 22, and I believe around Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Resolution appointing the Town of Groton Tree Warden, whereas the ordinance of the Town of Groton at section 15.5-35 provide that the tree warden shall be a licensed arborist or otherwise certified and be appointed by the Town Council for a term of one year and until a successor is appointed and qualified. And whereas Gary J. Schneider, the town's long-serving tree warden, has retired, and whereas Steve Post, Roads and Streets Supervisor, will be attending the Tree Wardens Association of Connecticut's Fall 2020 Tree Warden Academy, now therefore be it resolved that Steve Post is hereby appointed Tree Warden of the Town of Groton, Connecticut, to succeed Gary J. Schneider for a term of one year and until a successor is appointed and qualified. I so move.
Second. Moved by Parker and seconded by Franco. Is there any discussion on this?
Counselor Bordelone. Should it state in here that he's also going to be attending upon completion of the training? That we had talked about at the last meeting, that he was going to be, I guess it's a six, I forgot how many weeks. Should it state something like that, that he'd be appointed upon successful completion?
No, you're allowed to be appointed for one year.
Prior, okay. Thank you.
And again, just as I normally try to remember to state at the council meetings, all of these items that we're approving tonight have been discussed in great detail at Committee of the Whole. Any further comments on 2019-699? Seeing none of those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on to 2019-709-1, memorandum of agreement, 2019 State Homeland Security Grant Program Fund, on page 23. Counselor Franco.
Resolution authorizing entering into a memorandum of agreement between the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, and Town of Groton. Whereas the Town of Groton Police Department plans to utilize the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services, I'm sorry, and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security Grant Funding to support regional set-aside projects, and whereas memorandum of agreement and authorizing resolution is a requirement for receiving Homeland Security Grant Funds, and whereas the document details use of the local Homeland Security Grant Funds and the administration of the DEMHS Region 4 Homeland Security Grant Program, and details terms of custodial ownership of asset purchased with regional Homeland Security Funds, now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Groton may enter into with the delivery to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management, and Homeland Security, any and all documents which deems to be necessary or appropriate, and further resolve that John Bird, as the town manager of the Town of Groton, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Town of Groton, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary and appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. I so move.
Second. Moved by Franco and seconded by Heed. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none of those in favor of 2019-709, memorandum of agreement, 2019 State Homeland Security Grant Program Funds, please say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on to Roman numeral 14C, 2019-6801, DUI Enforcement Program Grant, on page 24. Counselor Heed, please.
Resolution authorizing the Connecticut Department of Transportation's Division of Highway Safety Comprehensive DUI Enforcement Program Grant. Whereas the Groton Town Police Department plans to utilize the Connecticut Department of Transportation's Division of Highway Safety Comprehensive DUI Enforcement Program Grant Funding to support enforcement operations that go beyond normal police patrols, and whereas the goal of the program grant is to support law enforcement agencies and their enforcement operations by increasing police presence through a combination of extra DUI patrols and sobriety checkpoints to substantially reduce the number of alcohol-related crashes and to reduce the number of individuals driving under the influence of drugs and/or alcohol. And whereas the goal of the grant is to support enforcement operations that go beyond, above and beyond normal police patrols in order to reduce the number of alcohol-related crashes and the number of individuals driving under the influence during the grant period, which runs November 21st, 2019, through September 7th, 2020, now therefore be it resolved that the town manager, John Bird, may apply for the Connecticut Department of Transportation's Division of Highway Safety Comprehensive DUI Enforcement Program Grant with an anticipated total state grant amount of $61,080.91. I so move.
Second. Moved by Heed and seconded by Parker. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none of those in favor of 2019-680, DUI Enforcement Program Grant, please say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We're on to 2019-6811, Town Council 2020 Regular Meeting Schedule, on page 25. Counselor Obray.
Resolution approving 2020 Town Council Regular Meeting Schedule. Be it resolved that the Town Council hereby approves the Town Council Regular Meeting Schedule for 2020 as follows. Tuesday, January 7th, 2020. Tuesday, February 4th, 2020. Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020. Tuesday, April 7th, 2020. Tuesday, May 5th, 2020. Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020. Tuesday, July 7th, 2020. Tuesday, August 4th, 2020. Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. Tuesday, October 6th, 2020. Wednesday, November 4th, 2020. Tuesday, December 1st, 2020. All meetings begin at 6:30 in the Community Room, Town Hall Annex, 134 Groton Long Point Road, on the first Tuesday of each month, except as noted. I so move.
Second. Moved by Obray and seconded by Bordelone. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none of those in favor of 2019-681, Town Council 2020 Regular Meeting Schedule, please say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on to 2019-682, One Town Council Committee of the Whole 2020 Regular Meeting Schedule. This is on page 26, and we are on. Counselor Bordelone, please.
Resolution approving the 2020 Town Council Committee of the Whole Regular Meeting Schedule. Be it resolved that the Town Council hereby approves the Town Council's Committee of the Whole Regular Meeting Schedule for 2020 as follows. Tuesday, January 14th, 2020. Tuesday, January 28th, 2020. Tuesday, February 11th, 2020. Tuesday, February 25th, 2020. Tuesday, March 10th, 2020. Tuesday, March 24th, 2020. Tuesday, April 14th, 2020. Tuesday, April 28th, 2020. Tuesday, May 12th, 2020. Tuesday, May 26th, 2020. Tuesday, June 9th, 2020. Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020. Tuesday, July 14th, 2020. Tuesday, July 28th, 2020. Tuesday, August 11th, 2020. Tuesday, August 25th, 2020. Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020. Tuesday, October 13th, 2020. Tuesday, October 27th, 2020. And finally, Tuesday, November 10th, 2020. I so move.
There's more on the back.
Oh, I stand corrected. Tuesday, November 24th, 2020. Tuesday, December 8th, 2020. All meetings begin at 6:30 PM in the Council Room 1, Town Hall Annex, 134 Groton Long Point Road, on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month, except in December. I so move.
Second. Moved by Bordelone, seconded by Bumgarner. Any discussion on this item? Counselor Bordelone.
I know it had been brought up at some of the meetings. Some people had stated or that we meet an awful lot. I just wanted to throw that back out there a little bit more, see what people think. Throw it on the table, we're going to approve this. I'm just throwing it out for discussion purposes. I'm just throwing it as part of the thought to think in the future about that, is looking at this, as we move to approve it.
Counselor Bumgarner.
Yeah, I think that'll be something we ought to discuss in the Rules Committee.
Yeah.
In addition, I know there have been several counselors who have brought up the time as well, maybe, you know, looking into, you know, exploring whether or not we extend out the time to a later date to allow for people who are working during the day to attend meetings. I know, I consider myself a part of that group, but I know many others in the town who would like to physically be in attendance at meetings, maybe constricted. So it's something we can look at. I don't see why, you know, we shouldn't, but I think at the very least, we should ask those questions when we're undergoing a Rules Review.
Counselor Parker?
We just have to make sure, I don't remember if it's in the Town Charter. I'm trying to remember everything about meetings and stuff.
It's in the rules.
It's in the rules, I know, but I just want to make sure that we're trying to be trans, trying to be as more open and people can come and hear things, because I know tons to, we tend to have a lot of issues, and we need to have at least some meetings to discuss everything. I'm willing to, looking at everything, but are you talking about pushing the time back to 7:00? But then there's meetings we won't get out till 10:00 or 11:00. So I, there's people who are paid staff that stay here, so I'm not sure how that would work out for them. I'm just wondering if that's going to...
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, so that can be on to the Rules Committee, and I believe you two are on the Rules Committee. So you can work that out and bring back a recommendation, and then we could have a full discussion once the, once the Rules Committee decides what they would like. Counselors Zepary, did you?
I would be concerned about cutting back the number of council of the whole meetings. We fill those meetings up, and we go well into 10:00 and often beyond when we have things to discuss. I think by reducing the number of meetings, you'd have to shorten the discussion, and I'm not sure that would be beneficial. I think the discussion has to occur. We have to consider each of our moves as carefully as we can, and I think we should stay at the two meetings a month.
So Counselor, just to remind everybody, we're talking about the meeting schedule at this point, and the time can be adjusted after the Rules Committee meets. We have Counselor Franco and Bordelone.
Discussing the amount of Committee of the Whole meetings, I personally don't think there are too many of them. Sometimes I believe we don't have enough of them, as there's so much business that comes through, and in a timely manner, sometimes we need to take care of things. And actually, I believe two years ago, I had suggested that we actually do two Town Council meetings and two Cowell meetings, so we can process things a little bit quicker sometimes that are in a timely manner. So I personally sometimes don't think we have enough meetings.
Counselor Bordelone.
Yeah, I guess my point was just to look at it in the sense of, maybe the structure, once again, would probably go back to the rules, but approving something like this, maybe there'd be possibility of being more beneficial having committees that focus on the meat and potatoes of that particular item, let it be, you know, Plastics Ordinance or something. You'd have a group that would report back, and then that would cut down on the lengthy meeting, because the discussion would be thorough and presented. So I guess I'm not saying I like transparency and discussion, as everybody knows. So I think maybe it's not the number, maybe it's the structure, so it would have to then go back to the rules to discuss, maybe we do need committees, and that's where I'm going with that, I'd say, so.
So is there anyone else who hasn't spoken yet that would wish to speak before we go back a second time? Counselor Bumgarner.
And it's my understanding that New London uses that model, where they dive deep into policy matters, and kind of each committee that has cognizance over that matter. But I will limit my remarks to, you know, what is remaining, you know, the meetings, whether or not we have two meetings, so. But I definitely, you know, hope we have a pretty comprehensive discussion about these things in the Rules Committee.
Mr. Bird?
I do have to throw out there that I would need to be involved in the committees, and timing, I probably would have to lose capping if we do committees, just so you know that probably...
Absolutely. So we are talking about accepting this particular schedule, and any of the details as to what the meetings will consist of, or whether we're going to have committees or not, is something for Rules to discuss. So is there anything else about this particular meeting schedule? Counselor Bordelone would wish to speak again.
In regards to the meeting schedule, I think, looking at the title, spacing, and the structure of it, also would allow what Counselor Obray had stated about having more discussion items with the town officials that could attend these different committees. So I, that's, once again, I think that's something to look at, looking at the schedule.
Seeing no further discussion, we will vote on 2019-682, Town Council Committee of the Whole Regular Meeting Schedule. All those in favor, please say aye. Abstentions? So eight in favor, one opposed, Bordelone, and zero abstentions. And we are on to 2019-7021, Town Council Personnel and Appointments, 2020 Regular Meeting Schedule, on page 28. Counselor Melendez.
Resolution approving 2020 Town Council Personnel and Appointments Committee Regular
Resolution approving 2020 Town Council Personnel and Appointments Committee regular meeting schedule. Be it resolved that the town council hereby approves the Town Council Personnel and Appointments Committee regular meeting schedule for 2020 as follows. Tuesday, January twenty-first, 2020. Tuesday, February eighteenth, 2020. Tuesday, March seventeenth, 2020. Tuesday, April twenty-first, 2020. Tuesday, May nineteenth, 2020. Tuesday, June sixteenth, 2020. Tuesday, July twenty-first, 2020. Tuesday, August eighteenth, 2020. Tuesday, September fifteenth, 2020. Tuesday, October twentieth, 2020. Tuesday, November seventeenth, 2020. Tuesday, December fifteenth, 2020. All meetings begin at 5:30 PM in the Community Room One, Town Hall Annex, 134 Groton Long Point Road, on the third Tuesday of each month. I so move.
Second. Moved by Melendez and seconded by Zepari. Any discussion on this particular item? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2019-702, Town Council Personnel and Appointments, 2020 regular meeting schedule, please say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. 2019-7471, CIP replacement sidewalk construction reappropriation, on page twenty-nine, and we are at Counselors of Perry.
Resolution authorizing the reappropriation of $25,000 from the physical year ending 2020 CIP replacement sidewalk construction to physical year ending 2020 CIP park improvement ADA compliance. Whereas $182,000 was appropriated in the physical year 2020 capital improvement budget for replacement of sidewalk construction, and whereas of this amount, $55,000 was for engineering and design to replace the sidewalk on Route 184 between Pumpkin Hill Road and the Haley Brook condominium's entrance, and whereas the state will be replacing this section of sidewalks as part of a larger project, and this physical year ending 2020 CIP local funding is no longer necessary. And whereas additional funding is required for physical year ending 2020 CIP improvement ADA compliance to replace basketball courts in Deerfield and Tanglewood Parks, be it resolved that the town council authorizes the reappropriation of $25,000 from physical year ending 2020 CIP 3B replacement sidewalks construction to physical year ending 2020 CIP 4E park improvement ADA compliance. Reducing CIP 3B from $182,000 to $157,000 and increasing CIP 4E from $48,000 to $73,000, and refer the matter to the RTM.
I so move.
I'm going to choke on it. I so move.
Who was the second? Counselors of Perry moved, seconded by Bordelon. Is there any discussion on this item? And again, we went into great detail at the committee of the whole meeting. So Counselors of Perry, and then Head.
I, I had the bad luck to read the only resolution that I disagree with. And I spoke about this at the committee of the whole, and I don't want to belabor it here, but I do want to put my objection to the whole process. There is a process by which we appropriate money for CIPs and for other budget items, and this should be in that process. To transfer money that has been appropriated for one purpose to another purpose is treating it like found money. It is not. It is the taxpayers' money. It belongs to the taxpayer, and we should appropriate it at the proper time. By doing it at this point, when the, the budgets come up, this will not be included in the next budget, and we'll pat ourselves on the back at holding of the, the ground level, when in fact, we've spent money that already onto that budget, and the taxpayers will have to pay for it the next time they, they get their mill rates. So I am opposed to this. I think there's plenty of time to put this in the standard budget process. I don't think this is an emergency to repair the basketball courts at this time, and it'll be a few months later, but I think it, it should go into the process that we have established, and appropriations in midterm should be for urgent needs that can't go through the regular budget process. So I am opposed to this motion.
Counselor Head.
I wasn't here for the discussion last week, but I would echo the same concerns that Counselors Perry has mentioned, with, you know, the corollary that I'm not opposed to it. I understand it's a kind of a routine, and it's a small amount of money, but the, what I'd like to see during the budget process is a sort of a schedule for where we might expect the future expenditures to maintain the basketball courts, the, the facilities that are, that like this is going towards, so that's all.
Any other counselors? Counselor Bordelon.
I'd just like to say that I, I do agree with Counselors of Perry's statement as to how it's allocated. And with that, once again, we did discuss it, it was brought up that, you know, the quotes that, or the thoughts of what could be done, and then after asking that it could be possibly done internally, you know, I also thought that that, you know, should be done, first and foremost, before becoming before us, that we exhaust all opportunities internally first, to remedy the problem and fix things that we can fix on our own before contracting out or doing such if we can to save costs. And with that, I was wondering if there's any updates as to anything as to the patching versus the repaving. I know that the $5,000 was allocated to be moved in addition to the 20, so I just wondered if there's any update.
Nothing at this point. I know they're going to try to ballpark it, our engineers, we're short of engineers right now, because one has replaced Gary, so we're hoping to have something soon, but...
So I guess I, I support this if it's a full replacement, but I, I...
I anticipate it to be a full. I'm anticipating it's going to be a full.
Right, and done internally, because I would think there would be cost savings, possibly. We might see some of this money come back into the account if we're doing it internally, if we're replacing one, then why not do two? And not patch the other, so.
Counselor Franco.
So, I hear what everybody is saying, but I just want to just remind everybody that the basketball courts were approved, and they went to the RTM, and they were approved there, and what happened was the bids came in higher than expected. So this is an allocation of money due to a higher-than-usual bid. In an accounting, budgets at times go over, and there's overages and there's shortages, and money sometimes is moved, and this is not an unusual function of accounting. So I understand it would be nice that when we approve a budget item in our budget, that everything goes very nicely and everything comes in at bid exactly where we want it to, but that's not always possible. So this was approved so we could sit and let it, the money sit in account for those, the basketball court, until we go to our next budget, and then ask for just the, a little bit extra that it's needed to allocate towards it, and this money that was for the sidewalks would just sit in our general fund anyway. So there's not, it's not like we're going to ask the taxpayers for more money come next budget for this, because the money is already there, they, we've already received those taxpayer money from our constituents. It's sitting in an account, so that's actually not an increase on taxes of them for the next round of budgets. Thank you.
Any other counselors who haven't spoken yet, wish to speak? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of 2019-747, CIP replacement sidewalk construction reappropriation, please say aye. Opposed? So moved eight in favor, one opposed, Zepari, and zero abstentions. Okay, that takes us to other business, and I would just ask that, I emailed you on two occasions, a blank form that we used last time for the manager's evaluation, and I would ask all of you to take a look at that, please. The manager's review will be coming up, I believe, next week, next week, so if you can go ahead and fill out that form and have it prepared for the next meeting, that would be most helpful to the manager. Any other, other business? Counselor Parker?
I'd like to make a formal request to be put back on the TVCCA.
Give me one second, please. Okay, Counselor O'Bree?
I'd like to ask also to continue with the, it's on to the EDC.
Any other formal request? Yes.
I think as a fairly new member up here, and I haven't been aware of which ones are available or what we can even ask to be on, so I think that should be come before discussion so that I'm aware of what actually there's a possibility for. With that, the personnel's appointments, is there a chance that that's going to come up as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's something that, I don't know, I just think it should all at once come before us as a list, and sit down maybe and discuss it.
It does indeed come before us as a list.
Yeah, I just, I'm not able to throw my name out or anything, so I'm not aware of the full...
That's fine. That's perfectly fine. Counselor Head.
I stole my thunder. I was going to announce that we have three spots on personnel and appointments, and we have to go through the, all the reappointments for ad hoc boards and commissions such as SCARA and TVC, or whatever.
TVCCA.
TVCCA, that's right. So that is definitely, we need to do that.
Right. And I would ask, Madam Clerk, if you could send us out a list of everything that requires appointments via email, and then everyone can peruse the list, and perhaps next week we can come all back with what you would be interested in at our next meeting.
I'd be more than happy. I'll send you the current list, well, the old list, you can see who served on what.
Yeah.
Okay.
That sounds great, thank you. Is there anything else? Mr. Manager, was there anything else we needed to cover tonight that I'm forgetting?
I don't think so.
Okay, very good. Seeing no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved by Parker, seconded by Baumgartner. Any discussion, no, no discussion on move to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously, and we are adjourned at 7:56, one down, how many more to go? Thank you.